Meeting called to order at 6:08. Mr. Martinez, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I'm sorry. Call to order, Mrs. Burgos, can you please take role?
Trustees present tonight are Calderon, Aguilar, and Viscarra. With trustee Duarte absent, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
A motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Zunoviscarra, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Calderon. All those, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously, three zero. Item D, comments from the public. This time, at this time, it is also the time for, the public can also come to the microphone and speak in favor of a particular candidate. Under request for oral communications, I have Mr. Jun Kim.
Good evening. My name is Jun Kim. I'm the one guilty for this meeting. Well, I came here to express for the people's mind and also include the mind. And I'd like to comment a little bit about how we can have right person in that position to make the right decision for us. And in order to have a right decision maker, we have to have person who capable to listening the community and capable to see what is real education of the principle. And the person, he should not listening to compass, should not listening to political And they should not to make the decision by personal favors. That is hurting our Collexico in long years. I believe around thirty years, we've been hurting by the system. We should not go going that way. I wish they had special election, but the board has power to make the decision. They decide to be appointed. And the people really upset because they didn't go for the special meeting. So, I believe this board doesn't have a make the right decisions, right appointments. Because that's last history showing up. And I brought the law, the Education Code, section 5090 through 5095. In order to, in case of board appointed, the people doesn't like it, we just need 1.5% of the registration of the boarders, which is like less than 300 persons sign. Only one or five persons' names is on the list, just need to put in the superintendent, county superintendent, we have to put it there. And we have thirty days to force them to special election. I have a form provided, they just need to put it in there. Whoever wants to do it, I will help them to get the form to starting tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Are there any further comments from the public in favor or of any particular candidate? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the procedure. Mr. Wyler?
For those of you who do not know me, I'm Clifford Wyler. I'm the attorney for the board. And I'm here to advise the board on the procedures. In terms of the procedures, as Mr. Kim pointed out, we are operating under the Education Code, Education Code Sections 5090 and following. There have been, I believe, eight candidates that have requested to be considered. Each candidate has been notified of a specific time of presentation and the duration and been given the questions. We also have applications from each of them. I understand that each of the board members present tonight has a copy of the questions and I believe, I understand, we're gonna just rotate who asked the questions. There can be follow-up questions. They should be limited and related to the answer, you know, the concept that's in the question and the answer. And they should be limited because I believe each candidate only has about fifteen minutes subject to the discretion of the board president. In terms of having three members present and only four members even if all were present, I should point out that to be selected, a candidate needs a majority of the board, in other words, three members to approve that candidate. A two-two vote, even if the fourth member was here, doesn't do it. Two-one vote doesn't do it. You need all three votes that are present here today to select a candidate. If there is no candidate selected tonight, the board has the option of scheduling another meeting with the additional board member present or just deferring to the Education Code, which says within Section 5091, Subpart A, "In the event that a governing board fails to make a provisional appointment or order an election within the prescribed sixty-day period, as required by this section, the county superintendent of schools shall order an election to fill the vacancy." The sixty days expires, I believe, a week from Sunday, technically either Friday or Monday, it probably won't matter. But if there is no decision, no appointment, no swearing in of a candidate to be a provisional trustee within that sixty days, then it goes to the county superintendent who shall order an election. Are there, do the board, any of the board members have any questions about the procedures? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wyler. We'll proceed on to the candidates. If we can have all the candidates up in front. Doesn't matter, in the front row. Thank you, gentlemen, and Ms. Butner. Good luck to all the candidates. Well, the first on our list is Mr. Vincent Cuevas. Each candidate, if I'm not mistaken, has the opportunity to provide a speech before we proceed to questions. Yes, sir. Excuse me. Mr. Wyler? How many minutes does he have?
If I recall correctly, the plan was three minutes approximately.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Vincent Cuevas.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I was an elected official on the Heffernan Memorial Hospital District from 1975 to 1982. I served as treasurer and vice chairman on the board. We had to study monthly financial statements of the hospital. We had about three million in accounts receivable and one million in accounts payable. Therefore, I have had experience in maintaining a budget. I was a teacher for thirty-two years and am familiar with the inside of the classroom. I've also done a lot of community advocacy for safety as a police commissioner. This includes safety in the streets, cross intersections, and general safety issues. I was also Caesar Chavez mentor teacher for two years. We put on plays and skits in the schools and passed out literature on Caesar Chavez, increasing the awareness of Caesar Chavez in the younger generation. I was born and raised in Coletzco and attended the Coletzco School District. I ran for school board because I care about the quality of education for our Coletzco school children. I'm a graduate of both Coletzco High School and San Diego State University Ivy Campus. I retired from the Coletzco Unified School District after thirty-two years as a credential teacher. Since retiring, I have been working as a volunteer tutor and as a community activist for youth issues. I'm a senior citizen and I'm activating the senior activities at the community center. I will appreciate your support for this important position. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cuevas. We will now proceed to the board member interview questions. Starting on my left, Mr. Seda will go down the questions until we are done.
Okay. Question number one, if appointed tonight for the next two years, what would be something you want to accomplish and how would you do it?
Well, our school budget is heavily dependent on both state and federal funding. As a trustee, I would be able to forge stronger relationships with elected officials at a higher level. I would like to increase community involvement with schools through community advocacy. That includes running petitions and bringing parents to meetings. For example, I ran a petition by the city council of 300 signatures for safety on VV Williams, and the result of that is they're going to put a stoplight on Highway 98 in
How many board meetings have you attended in the last twelve months?
Well, I have added, I've attended a meeting per month for the last ten months, which comes to ten meetings, but I mean, I've added other meetings where I was participating in school boards, especially in the time of Dr. Alvarez and Dr. Dadey.
Mr. Cuevas, what do you think about education and what would you do to accomplish that?
My past records in education speaks for itself as a committed educator. Every day I'm involved in education, whether it would be tutoring or serving as a substitute teacher. I always think about education. This includes having recurring dreams about engaging students and learning in the classroom. If chosen for this position, I would visit school offices and encourage staff development and motivating students.
Question number four, what questions do you have for the board to help you prepare to take on this commitment if chosen?
Well, this is a one-year commitment for me, and I'm open-minded and flexible. But can the board provide me with financial and student achievement data to guide me in my decisions if I'm elected for this board seat?
If selected, what do you propose to do to, A, fix the budget problems, B, increase student achievement, C, improve the district climate? You can choose to answer them individually or as a collective answer?
I'll try individually. I want to work with our professional staff, who are the professionals in this field on the budget. But in fixing the budget, this could possibly include and not limited to freezing the salary step scale for teachers, not decreasing the class size. However, say we don't go there, then I would look for budget resources such as grants and endowments or corporations providing funds for vocational ed courses. I would also cut the cost of legal fees, and if there had to be cuts, I would cut across the board, including administration and teachers for the whole school district. Increasing student achievement, B. Looking closely at the data, see if there's gaps in learning, then ask, is it poor leadership, ineffective instructional practices, limited budgets, outdated curriculum, little parent involvement, class size? What is it? Find out what one school side is doing to be successful. What aren't they doing? Are all children in a safe learning environment? Does each school have a mission or a goal? Then having after-school academic tutoring to change students from basic to proficient. This also would include Saturday academic schooling. Communicating to the community on the school improvement and student achievement. We must ensure that staff has the training and resources to improve student achievement. You know, we're a unified school district, so that if one school sends teachers to training, then the other schools should also equally send participants. There should be consistency across the board. Improving the district climate. First of all, improve the district climate is by having a safe and comfortable school. Doing this by increasing community and parent involvement. Have character education in the schools to build a high morale and spirit. Have violence prevention and conflict negotiation in the curricula. This includes preventing acts of bullying. That's it.
Thank you. In current fiscal times, how will you prioritize expenditures to ensure quality educational services and student safety?
Well, once again, I have the ability to work with the professional staff. Educational costs per student would have highest priority. What are we getting for our educational dollar? For example, there could be a big savings on the milk products that go to the cafeterias if we went with a local distributor instead of an outside company in Escondido. Also, cutting the cost of legal fees would put dollars back into the general fund.
Question number seven, what specific knowledge and experiences do you have that make you the best candidate for this position?
I'm in the unique position of being the only retired classroom teacher among the participants, applicants. My experience as most caring teacher of 1995 tells you I care about the educational system in Collexico. The voters of Coletzco trusted me based on my reputation and integrity. I ran for school board in the fall of 2012 and received 2,428 votes. I was in third place, only 103 votes behind Latif Viscarra. And basically, I have the time to put in for this position.
Thank you.
Okay.
No follow-up questions? Thank you. I'd like to, with the next candidate, we'll start on my right with, so give the opportunity to ask different questions. Is that, is that okay with the board? So, next person is Mr. Benjamin Horton. Mr. Horton, you can provide your speech and then we'll go into the questions.
All right. My name is Ben Horton. I'm sure most of you know me, I'm a local person. I was born here, grew up here, and went to school here. What gives me understanding of what this is, what they're asking about is that I spent thirty years in the military, got all the way up to major, and that gives me a certain ability in administration. And in reference to the school, I spent ten years teaching the military program in the high school, in and out, and one of the things that helped me to understand it better was that I gave of my time. This was a requirement that the military put upon me to work at the school district, at the high school, free of charge, understanding what was going on in the school district and learning from it. Another point is that I serve as a board member for Charlie Family Care Outreach and kids that need help. I have done that for the last nine years. And with that, I work with budgets. There was a certain point where we were almost ready to close down. We had to find ways to bring the budget in line and work with the people. And other part is, I'm the chair of the Economic Commission for the City of Collexico. We have had certain requirements and working with certain, with my fellow board members, we're able to bring the Crown Plaza, correct, Crown Center to point where it's ready to start closing the escrows. I feel that with this, I bring understanding of the school district, 'cause I have made it a point when I could to make the meetings, to have a better understanding, to serve on some committees that the school district had, which was a steering committee at the time when they're having budget situations and some need to have a better understanding from the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zunoviscarra?
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Question number one, if appointed tonight for the next two years, for next year, what would be something you would want to accomplish and how would you do it?
One of the things that I would like to do is bring the community together with the school district to have a better understanding, the workings ins and out of the school district. That is not an easy plan to put forth. I remember when I was young and my mother used to bake a cake for the PTA. We would work with the teachers, we would have a better understanding. I used to sit there and wonder. And I think this is the greatest of all, that the teachers and the parents came together to work for the betterment of their students or the kids. And I think that we have lost a certain amount of that. And as time has progressed, new ideas have came forth, but nothing takes the place of bringing teachers and parents together to work with their kids. I feel that that's something that we have lost, and if we keep it simple, if we keep things simple, we'll have a better understanding of how we could work together. I don't have all the answer, but I believe that it's working together, you can find an answer that will work for all.
Mr. Horton, how many board meetings have you attended in the last twelve months?
I would say, if I could use a safe figure, about eighty percent. At times, there was a conflict with the city and with the requirements I had to do in reference to the Economic Commission. But when I could, I would be here and I would say about eighty, about eighty percent of the meetings within the year.
Question number three, what do you think about education and what would you do to accomplish that?
Education, nothing takes place of education. And one of the things that, in order to accomplish that, is to look at what we need to do for our children, how are we gonna make the education work for them? I hear a lot of times that the Collexico School District is lacking. I don't believe that. I believe that giving the right tools and the right abilities, we can move forward. I think Collexico has the greatest school ever, and I remember when I was young, and I haven't, I don't think it has faltered in that. All you have to do is have a working relationship, and that's a working relationship with the administration, the teachers, and the parents. And if you bring that together, and one of the things I believe is communication. If the people have a understanding, I don't feel that I have to tell the person what's good for them. They tell me what they want and how we all can work together to bring a common understanding about what we need to do for our children.
What questions do you have for the board to help you prepare to take on this commitment if chosen?
Well, in reference to the board, we have a great board here. And one of the questions I would say, how can I help to make this into a better situation? Be part of the solution, not part of the problem. I think in the past, we had a lot of problems, but if you come into a situation saying that I'm here to be part of the solution, the solution will be there to work with.
If selected, what do you propose to do to, A, fix the budget problems, B, increase student achievement, and C, improve the district climate?
I think one of the things that I might try to do on this question is bring it all together. If you look at this question as a question as one, you have an answer. In reference to the budget, you can't really fix a budget if you don't know what you're bringing in for revenues. We have to have a better understanding what revenues we're bringing in, and from there, we can design the budget to work around what we have to spend. If you're gonna spend more than what you have, then you're destined to have problems. And the idea is that some people had a misunderstanding about their property tax. They didn't understand what a estimate or what the final. The final is what you get, not what you figure you're gonna get. And in reference to the, our students, well, you know, sometimes you have to live by examples. If we can show myself as a board member that I feel that, you know, you're there, you're here to learn, if you walk into the classroom and you communicate with the teachers and the students and motivate them. When I was in the military, one of the things I had to do was motivate my people, my soldiers. As a commander, if I couldn't motivate my people, I'm destined to be defeated. And I also believe this, you put a plan together. No plan is a plan for failure. And I always have believed that as I went through my life.
In current fiscal times, how will you prioritize expenditures to ensure quality educational services and student safety?
Well, when you talk about prioritizing, I believe the most important priority is our students, the education that they have to get. And I believe that they deserve, and not, I put it that they have a requirement to have the best. If we have to cut back on other things, I want our students and the teachers to have the tools to teach our students. Teachers are the ones that, if everybody is sitting here, you remember your teacher. You remember that teacher that motivated you to be who you are. And I, I believe a teacher, I, I remember my first, my kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Anderson, I, it still goes in my mind. She gave me something to desire, the learning part. That was my kindergarten teacher. And there's other teachers throughout my life that have been the motivating. We motivate our teachers by motivating our students, and it goes hand in hand. We cannot have one without the other. And one of the tools that we have to work with is our administration. They're all teachers, they are our prior teachers, most of them, and they understand that part. And I think if we all come together with that understanding, and you, you can tell in a person's voice how they wanna motivate. If, when you walk out there and you have that voice of leadership, you will motivate your people. It goes hand in hand.
Question number seven, what specific knowledge and experiences do you have that make you the best candidate for this position?
Well, if you want to talk about a life of learning, I have a life of learning. I guess it started maybe when I graduated from high school, 'cause everything I had learned up to that point was my motivating. At the age of seventeen, I go into the military, and it was through the National Guard here in Collexico. That's when I had the first experience. Then I went through the whole amount of time. Then I took my exam for the Military Academy. I was accepted to that. I went through there and got my commission as an officer. Then from there, I spent time in a National Guard, Army Reserve, National Guard, even active duty, and all the way up to battalion commander, when I was doing a tour at Fort Hood, Texas. And one of the things I learned was motivation. Now, from there, here I am, here in Collexico. I serve on the Charlie Family Care. It's a nonprofit organization, it works with the youth. I have been there for ten years. And I'm not saying it has been the easiest, 'cause there's been times when we had budget problems too. And I had to work with that, bring it together, and at the point, go out and do my own research. And I still do that, too. And one of the achievements that I can say that I have done just this past year is to be instrumental in working with the help program. We put a program together, working with the school district for a tutoring program. There was no compensation for that on my part. I did because I wanted to do it. And then the other part is, in the military, I got a grant for L Central to put a program to help the tutor kids at the National Guard Armory. We had to restructure the armory and put that together. I put a grant to there for that. Dealing in the high school, ten years teaching and involved with, with the cadet program. Eventually, it folded up, but that was nothing where you're being compensated. There was no reason for me to be there, but I did it. And now, here I am with the city, I'm with the Economic Commission. And now, here I am with the city, I'm with the Economic Commission, we have moved that forward. We're doing the, structures for both, back and forth. Now, one of the things that I, I'm learning is that I, I'm involved with the Charter Military Academy. The Charter Military Academy is going to be taking care of the tutoring deal. And I'm trying to make it to the point where we get a grant together where we can offer tutoring for the kids, not at the same level of the school, we don't want to compete with the school. But this is going to be a program to move it to a different level. And these are things that I'm adamant about, I feel a warm feeling about. And this is what makes me who I am, and it tells the community what I stand for. And I'll bring that to the school district with all the energy that I can possibly give forth.
Any follow-up questions, board members? Thank you, Mr. Horton. Mr. Orlando G. Espino?
Statement, okay. Hello, everyone, my name is Orlando Espino. I am a product of Callexico Unified. I graduated in the year 2000. I returned to the community after going to Riverside and the Marine Corps because this is where my roots are, okay? My mom has been a teacher in the district for the past 20-something years, she started out as an aide. I was a substitute for a couple of months, and my wife is a substitute. So when I decided to apply for an appointment, it was because I'm one of the stakeholders in this community, along with each and every one of you.
Mr.?
Question number one, if appointed tonight for the next two, actually, it should read a year and a half, not two years, right? Sorry for, for that. If appointed tonight for the next year and a half, what would be something you would want to accomplish and how would you do it?
Well, I know the, the budget has a lot to do with the state and other funds that are coming in, but my primary goal would be to de, what, what could I do with the board to decrease class size in K through three? It's very important to me because I know as a prior substitute, and from my parents and from other friends that I have that are teachers, that it's very hard to manage a group of 40 and then manage a group of 20. And if we could, we're able to focus on kids when they're that, that young, at that age, then they're going to be able, like Mr. Horton said, they'll remember their first grade teacher, especially when they had that attention that was given to them, and they were not just another number. So decreasing class sizes and providing more staff development and maintaining and keeping the teachers that we have now, that's something that would be my immediate goals.
Mr. Espino, how many board meetings have you attended in the last 12 months?
In the last 12 months, based on my schedule, I would only attend one. But I kept up on most of the district matters through my friends, colleagues, and by going on the website and pulling the agendas that are posted.
Mr. Espino, what do you think about education and what would you do to accomplish that?
Education is a foundation to a productive society, and whether that entails at national level, state level, but most importantly, at the local level. We all go to school, we all have children, we all know a teacher. And being able to have an education where the, you're giving the productive tools, that, that sets the standards for everyone for the future.
What, what questions do you have for the board to help you prepare to take on this commitment if chosen?
If chosen, the first thing I would ask would be for a complete detailed review of the budget. Looking from the outside in, it's difficult to ascertain what exactly is going on unless you have a, unless it's explained to you, unless you're, you're looking at it from the board point of view. Because at that point, you have to balance out the community, administration, students, and, you know, that would be my first go-to step. Look at the budget, see where the money's going, because at that point, you'd be able to track it, analyze it, and evaluate where you can send it to.
Mr. Espino, if selected, what do you propose to, to A, fix the budget problems, B, increase student achievement, C, improve the district climate? You can choose to answer in a collective answer or individually.
Well, with the budget, like I said earlier, I would immediately move to identify where the money's spent, evaluate how it's being spent, and track it. And budgets are necessary evil. Not all organizations run a balanced budget, and especially in these times, we have to be due with what we have. And the budget is something that, although it dictates where the district goes, there are other matters that, that outweigh it at times. Like, in this case, I believe students, sometimes maybe there has to be a budget, there has to be a deficit, that has to be carried over so that student achievement and, and staff can be properly trained. Because we all know the economic cycle goes up and down, and sooner or later, you know, it's going to come back up. What was the other student?
B was increase student achievement?
Oh, increase student achievement. It's going back to allocating resources back to the classroom, back to the teachers, and focusing on the after-school programs. But most importantly, you know, giving it back to where, where the teaching is being done, and that's back in the classroom. Let's see.
Improve district climate?
Okay. District climate, overall, just you have to maintain open lines of communication between the students, the staff, the community, parents, because that way you, you avoid misunderstandings, you avoid misconceptions, you avoid, you avoid any, any lag in time between issues that might arise. So the most important is B, communication.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Espino, in current fiscal times, how will you prioritize expenditures to ensure quality educational services and student safety?
I would prioritize it back, like I said earlier, back to the classroom, back to where the teaching is done, and then move forward from there. In terms of student safety, be training the district staff, students, teachers in lockdown drills, making sure we have adequate, I know some schools are not Alexis or Chavez, where they're, you know, state of the art. There's other schools that need more improvements in infrastructure and training, and that's something that I would definitely look at.
Question number seven, what specific knowledge and experiences do you have that make you the best candidate for this position?
First of all, I'm objective. My current career as a law enforcement officer, I have to be able to come across a situation, view the sides, both sides of the story, three sides, four sides of the story, and come to a conclusion and be a problem solver. So that's something that can carry on to the board. And if I'm appointed, I also know how to be a team player. Because out there, when you're out there handling calls, handling situations, it's not a one-man team. One, one person dictates the, how the call ends, but it's, it's a, it's a team, it's a team effort. I'm not a micromanager. I understand full well that administration, superintendent, they have their job, and it's their job to present to me the options. And it's going to be up to me and the board to weigh it with the best interest of the community and the students.
Thank you, Mr. Espino. Next candidate is Mr. Daniel Romero.
Good afternoon, Daniel Romero. To begin with, I have been a, I, I went to school from first grade through 12 here at Callexico. My kids, they all began attending the public school system at the sixth grade and went on and graduate from high school here and on to their respective careers. So I've been a, just about a lifetime citizen here of the state of Callexico. And Honorable Board of Trustees, I am very interested and believe I am a viable candidate to be your fifth member of the Board of Trustees, primarily due to my most recent experiences, as well as prior to working with budgets in the public sector, as well as the private sector. While serving on the boards with the different entities, as much as possible, I followed the practice of doing my own due diligence with research on the issues so I could be informed as much as possible prior to the meetings in order to contribute with informed dialogue during an open session to further clarify what the real issue is and, and share a point of view and a probable option for a solution, and eventually vote on what is in the best interest of the whole. I understand and live the experiences when the majority differs with my opinion, either through reasonable argument or simply just to argue. After everything is said and done, one moves forwards to the next item. Once you have concluded on the issues of the agenda, then after the meeting concludes, then all the members of the board become as one, and they move forward with giving direction to, in your case, to the superintendent and administration. Trustees and those present here tonight, I will end with this concept, which I believe reflects the person who I have been while serving in different capacities, which is a quote from a former President of the United States. "I believe in the tight fist and an open mind. A tight fist with money and an open mind to the needs of America." And so in this case, to the needs of the students and the balance of the CUSD community. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin with Ms. Zunaviscara.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Romero. Question number one, if appointed tonight for this term, what would you, what would be something you would want to accomplish and how would you do it?
If I am honored to be a member of this board for the balance of this term, my primary objective for the benefit of the students would be to accomplish a synergy, a synergy amongst the trustees, administration, certified and classified, in order to expand and best utilize CUSD's resources in order to establish an environment that our students deserve. By accomplishing this, I strongly believe it could promote the desire to pursue their best interests in academics while participating and enjoying a balance with their respective talents, if it's in art, sports, or any other areas of interest. From my perspective, an important first step would be to publicize the accomplishments by students from kinder through the senior class, and even extending it to the alumni who have become successful in their choice of careers. By doing this within the CUSD community, the parents and the general public will be proud to share the success stories with others, which promote a pride by everyone in the same community, by the alumni, and by the citizens of Callexico. Maybe the students will be instilled, instilled with the spirit of, if they can do it, then so can I.
Mr. Romero, how many board meetings have you attended in the last 12 months?
I have attended quite a few meetings since November 2011. I have no count how many meetings I have attended during those 21 months. At times, I would attend one and follow up with the next one, but also, it would be where I would have to skip some due to some other prior commitments. I, I did serve on your Pathway to Solvency Committee, which, if I recall correctly, I attended all meetings, and if I missed one, it was just, just one due to a prior city or business commitment.
Okay. Question number three, what do you think about education and what would you do to accomplish that?
A good education is a primary foundation for the life of a student after he or she finishes with school. The higher level of education the student succeeds in, the higher the likelihood it will be for that student to pursue, to pursue their dream career. The foundation for a good education is a good understanding of math and the English language. Can anyone think of any workplace that does not require some clear understanding of math? There are different levels of math, so the only limitation that exists is to the level the student chooses. As for the English language, it's no different, since communication is vital. For everyone involved in a project that each would be able to communicate and be understood which goal that is being sought. Let's take music, music has math in it. Let's now take songs. The better command one has for the language, the more options a songwriter has for lyrics. Let's take sports. Besides the point system to determine winners and losers, math is used through statistics and tendencies that are furnished to assist a team to identify strengths and weaknesses of their opponents. Example, in football, if a team has a tendency to run on every first down, that's math, and the opposing defense will be ready to defend against it. In baseball, if a pitcher has a tendency to throw a strike with the very first pitch to each different batter, or as a batter is always swinging at the very first pitch, this is statistics, and that is math. Keeping the students informed at different grade levels, the different applications with math and English, or, or their preferred language, and its importance will remind them that a good education will likely define a good career.
What questions do you have for the board to help you prepare to take on this commitment if chosen?
Well, as you have asked, and we'll ask the balance of the persons here being interviewed, what our goals are. It's also important to know what your respective goals are as well. In order to understand what your goals are and how one can mesh with it, with what one is trying to pursue, then that's one great way for the board as a whole to work that much closer together. But if anything else, it's more like, help me help you, give you as much information that you know about any particular issue, and it could help me, help the, especially at the meetings or other situations, provide a more, a better response with some foundation.
Mr. Romero, if selected, what do you propose to do to A, fix the budget problems, B, increase student achievement, and C, improve the district climate?
Fix the budget problems. Fixing the budget problems requires familiarity with all the issues and not simply being informed how much is scheduled to be reviewed, received, or how much is being expensed. There's usually a difference in figures when estimates or calculations are completed versus how much will actually be received. Budget problems are usually tied to expanding funds depending on lofty expectations and revenues. Leaving a gap between anticipated revenues and annual expenses prepares you for one or two or both, for unexpected expenses that can be taken care of at the end of the fiscal year, or just in case the anticipated revenues fall short of target. You can take care of that as well. Fiscal responsibility is fixing the budget. Thank you. Oh, increase student achievement, sorry. The answer to question number one, to what was given to me previously, is what I believe to be an important initial step to improve student achievement. I believe the concept will increase an overall amount of students or expanding on those that are already achieving success. Improve the district climate. Improving the district climate or the CUSD environment can be improved by pressing forward on the best use of available resources, and those resources should not be limited to the revenues. There are teachers and counselors who are first to interact with our students. Once each classroom is attended by a good teacher with the necessary tools to promote that teaching and learning environment, the students will have a more positive attitude towards the district climate. That was a three.
In current fiscal times, how will you prioritize expenditures to ensure quality educational services and student safety?
The importance and focus for each student is the quality of education that he is being furnished by the Callexico Unified School District, which is comprised of the trustees, administration, certified and classified. One cannot perform the scope of responsibility without the support of the other groups and everyone. everyone must understand that the available jobs are created based on the quantity of students attending classes. The quality and success of one's effort depends on the same by the other groups, or one cannot succeed without the support of the other. Then how does one prioritize expenditures? You maximize the talent of each member of the district. If administration is short on staff, then information will be bottlenecked there, and there will be delays on sharing of critical information to the other areas. If maintenance or transportation is short on personnel, how will the students get to school, or how much will be, how much will the classroom be impacted with lack of maintenance, et cetera? So one has to find that delicate balance with staffing needs as well as supplies and equipment and tools. Improved success with student accomplishments may attract more to live in or invest in Clexico, thus broaden the base from where revenues will be received, and how sweeter it will become once the economic climate rebounds.
Question number seven. What specific knowledge and experiences do you have that make you the best candidate for this position?
In the area of knowledge, I have the understanding on how a general fund account can be used, as well as the limitations, requirements, and restrictions on the use of other funded accounts, done through my recent experience as a member of the City Council here in Clexico. I have become familiar on working on different budgets, on not just with the city Clexico. I have also been active on management of resources with the Clexico Chamber of Commerce, the Joint Chambers of Commerce, Imperial Valley Pop Warner League, which includes Clexico, Mexicali, Brawley, El Centro, and Yuma, and even when Laleta Clexico Pop Warner Program here, here. Besides the different businesses that I am involved in. And as a reminder, I was also a member of the Pathway to Solvency to avoid being taken over by the state.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Is there any follow-up questions by the board members? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Based on the request by a board member, we will take a three-minute recess for restroom break.